Mr. President, it is an incredible honor and privilege to be here today as we inaugurate the first Immigration Month for the City of Los Angeles. As you know, Los Angeles is a city of immigrants, founded by immigrants, a city that is very fortunate to have amongst itself over 100 languages spoken in this great city. It is the largest city of immigrants from so many countries, the largest Mexican population outside of Mexico City, the largest Salvadorian population outside of El Salvador, the largest Guatemalan population out of Guatemala, I believe the largest Filipino population outside of Manila, on and on and on. This is a city like this nation where people come with their hopes and their aspirations for a better life. They come not just as immigrants but as entrepreneurs. They come to make an economic contribution, a moral and cultural contribution, they come to be completely integrated into the social fabric.
Shh, hold on, hold on. Please, let's be quiet and pay our, show our respects. Mr. Sadio, back to you.
Thank you, sir. They come to fully integrate themselves into the social life of this great city. And so, it's an honor that we're here today to honor a representative group of immigrants in this city who have played a vital role selected by their council members as the immigrant of the month for their districts. And I want to take a moment just to introduce them. We had a ceremony earlier outside. All of them received their presentation, their plaques, their acknowledgements. Let me show that. All of them outside received their acknowledgements like this. I want to introduce them.
Bravo.
You want to do this with me? I brought Mr. Kocorian up too because he's so articulate and thoughtful, I thought I'd embellish my...
Brought a little backup.
He's got my back. So, at a time when there's incredible rancor in Washington, a lack of action, the debate and discussion or whatever goes on for debate and discussion is so negative, it's always important for this city to express with its leadership, its voice of leadership, the important role that immigrants do play in our society here in Los Angeles and California. And so, with collaboration and help from the mayor's office, his office of immigrant affairs with a group that we welcome called Welcome.us and Forward.us, this was brought to us as an idea just a few weeks ago. And within a few weeks, the collaboration of the staffs of all those entities and the leadership of my staff, we've brought this to Los Angeles. It's the first, but it won't be the last because this city will continue to be a great city of hopes and aspirations for all immigrants of the world. And so, it's with a great, great honor that we acknowledge Immigration Month for the City of Los Angeles. I want to introduce my colleague, Paul Kocorian, who spoke so eloquently earlier this morning about its importance.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sadio, and thank you for this inaugural event which I hope will be a long and important tradition in this city council for us to recognize the rich contributions that immigrants have made throughout the history of this country and from throughout the world. Every one of us here has immigrate, has ancestors who've immigrated to this country. Even Mr. O'Farrell, who also traces Native American roots, also has his immigrant roots as well. So each of us has that element in common. My own family immigrated to this country about 100 years ago. My grandparents came to this country and struggled in the same way that immigrants are struggling right now today to make a go of it. So, if I may, Mr. Sadio, I would like to acknowledge the presence of the honoree for the second council district, Archbishop Hovnan Dardarian, the Archbishop of the Western Diocese of the Armenian, the Armenian Church of North America, which is the largest diocese of Armenian congregants anywhere in the world outside of Armenia. As Mr. Sadio mentioned, this is the home of the largest part of the Armenian diaspora in the world. And His Eminence Archbishop Dardarian has been not only an exemplary spiritual leader for that community, but a representative of the rich contributions that immigrants have made to this country. He came himself as an immigrant and has transformed the Western Diocese of the Armenian Church and has brought his leadership not only in a spiritual capacity, but as an advocate for all those who've immigrated here and struggled, who've come from places like Iran and Iraq and Lebanon and of course Armenia and other places throughout the world to make their home here in Southern California throughout the Western United States. So, I couldn't think of a better honoree who not only is himself an extraordinarily exemplary immigrant to these shores, but also somebody who represents the very large immigrant community here and advocates for them. And it was for those reasons that just earlier this year, His Eminence was awarded with the Ellis Island National Medal of Honor for his, the example that he has set as an immigrant who's arrived here in Southern California. Your Eminence, it's a great honor to have you with us today.
Let me name the honorees that were given to us by various offices. They are as follows: Salvador Lara, Isabel Salas, Miguel Luna, Jeronimo Garcia, Neges Nikki Legese, Gloria Ayala, Carlos Saragosa, as we've just heard, the Archbishop. And then finally, perhaps one of the most important advocates for immigrants. For over 60 years, he dedicated his life. He created an organization in my district on Pico and Catalina. He was a professor, he was a union organizer, he was a teacher, he was an advocate unparalleled in the history of this state and nation. Bert Corona is our honoree. I want to thank all the honorees for being here with us today. This is the inaugural, but as I said, not the last. Let me introduce the group that brought this idea to us. This is part of a national effort and a national campaign. Tolu Ulubumi is the executive director of Welcome.us or Welcome.us, and she's been involved in this effort at a national level. She comes by way of Maryland. It's a great pleasure to introduce Tolu Ulubumi.
Thank you, sir. Good morning. I am honored, humbled to be here today to represent Welcome.us and to be here with the councilmen. We are thrilled by this opportunity. Welcome.us is dedicated to celebrating a United States that is fueled by immigrants from around the world. Our goal really is to elevate the inspirational stories of those immigrants, and there isn't a better example of that than here in the great city of LA. It is my distinct pleasure to introduce Michael Brokheim, who is a founder of Welcome, Charlie, and a leader in the LA community and nationwide. He has been an inspirational part of Welcome.us. He has been committed to this campaign and organization from its inception, and I am thrilled to have him join us today. Michael?
Let me, because I forgot, let me queue up. We have a video that's queued up for this, and we can play that before we hear from Michael.
... struck rock and stuck. Together we came across the ocean and towards the unknown. By horse and wheel, westward we came, chasing the sunset. We came by steam, across rivers, over mountains and valleys, towards the promise of a new beginning. We conquered the skies, built planes, buses and cars. When we had nothing else, we came on foot, ran and walked and crawled. We made history in the wake of those who came before us, before the waves of all of those yet to come. We carried luggage, letters and loved ones. Some of us carried nothing but our own potential. We came for love, for liberty, for life. Our reasons for coming were as unique and as numerous as the forces that brought us here. But once we arrived, all of us did the exact same thing. We helped build this country, and we were welcome.
Please welcome the executive director and founder of Welcome.us, Michael Brokheim.
Thank you, and just, just watching that video makes me want to just appreciate and first start by recognizing so many people who are involved in making this campaign a reality. I'm, you know, we're accepting this proclamation. Obviously, thank you to Councilman Sadio and the mayor's office for putting, for organizing this event today. On behalf of several co-founders, the executive director of Welcome.us, Tolu Ulubumi, Dan Adler, Joe Green, Jen Martin, Catherine Lyons, the entire Welcome.us family and Forward.us family, and literally hundreds of volunteers who've come out of the woodworks to celebrate the first ever Immigrant Heritage Month. It's truly an honor to be here and to see this grow from, you know, what, what makes this particularly special in front of this, you know, this august, august body is that, and I don't know if you know this, Immigrant Heritage Month, Immigrant Heritage Month was actually born in Los Angeles. It grew out of a series of dinners organized by a very close friend of mine, Joe Green, who's the founder and president of Forward.us. He's been working for several years on immigration policy issues, gathered a group of friends of us together and said, "How do I get the grassroots more activated around this issue? How do I get, you know, everyone just sort of thinking about immigration and what an important issue it is?" And we thought actually the opening was to do something pretty different and actually go in a different direction than, than politics. We said that the stuff that we're talking about in the political rhetoric around this issue is obviously important, but there's sort of a, an underlying foundation. When you have, when you have political issues, you have a lot of divisive rhetoric and some people can recoil from that and specific policies that people may or may not agree with, but when you think about this country and what makes it great, there's very little that you can disagree about the fact that it's a country that's built on immigrants, a tradition of immigration and a history of immigration. And so, we came up with the idea of organizing Immigrant Heritage Month to be a platform for everyone to be able to share their story. And everyone, you know, pretty much every single person in the US has a story that they can share, which connects them in a very personal way to the plight and the situation that immigrants find themselves in today. And so, that's the fundamental idea behind Immigrant Heritage Month, to create a platform and an opportunity for people to connect with their own immigrant heritage, to celebrate their own immigrant heritage. And we feel very, very lucky that we've, that we've been, we've been recognized now in over 30 states and as Councilman Sadio said, we hope that's only the beginning. We hope that the issue on the political, on the political, political front makes a lot of progress and hopefully, you know, we get over that hill. But then we hope that this, this platform actually continues to grow and be a way for us all to come together to celebrate something that really is America's competitive advantage in the world. It's the, it's the one thing that makes us distinct. You can, you know, and you can sort of go to other countries, you can make other countries your home, but sort of distinctly in the world, you can come to America and become an American. And that's very, very special and I, you know, I would argue that's the single sort of most distinguishing thing about this country. And so, born in Los Angeles, Immigrant Heritage Month, we're very proud to be here. Thank you for recognizing us, and that's all. Thank you very much.
Mr. Sadio, I do have a few members that would like to say a few words. So, just depending on when you'd like for them to be inserted.
Yes, we've got a board member from Welcome.us, then we'd love to hear from the members. City Attorney's also here, and then we'll wrap up with the mayor's office. So, let, let us just bring the board member up from...
Please go right ahead.
And that is our local Angelica Salas, who is the executive director of Chirla and our partner and champion in so many campaigns on behalf of immigrants.
Good morning, everybody, and I just want to say thank you. Thank you to Los Angeles because I think that we've always set the tone, we've always set the pace in terms of what it means to be a city that integrates its immigrants, that really recognizes its, their contributions in every aspect of life, economically, socially, culturally. It has been in this council chambers that we've said in the past, proclamations and recognitions, as well as good policy that supports immigrants. And I know that it is, what we've done, there is much more to do because we need to be an example to the rest of the country about what it means to be a united city, what it means to be a united community. And today is just one more example of the great work that our leaders, our leaders, starting with our mayor, but certainly with every one of our council members, many of you who are also immigrants yourselves. So, it's a, it's great, with great pride that as an honorary board member of Welcome.us, we accept this proclamation. Thank you.
Let me start off with Mr. Price.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President, to Gil and all of us assembled here today. This is an exciting day to celebrate, and I just want to recognize the nominee from the 9th District, Gloria Ayala, whose story I think is similar to many that, that we, that we will hear and that we know of. Gloria came to this country more than 20 years ago. Gloria, why don't you step up to the mic, Gil? Came to this country more than 20 years ago, escaping political turmoil and financial hardship in her native Honduras. A university graduate back home, Gloria was the first in her family to make the trek to the United States, really to make a life better for her children. She was a mother of two, two boys, and it was a difficult choice she had to make leaving them back home. But proud to say that today, both of her sons are college graduates, one's a computer science professional, the other an industrial engineer. But Gloria worked small jobs and even pursued an education to become a medical assistant in the 9th District for a while. Soon, she was driven to start her own business, and while working at the medical clinic, she pulled together the savings to start a alteration shop that since became very successful with her two brothers. And then in 2003, she started her own shop, Gloria's Alterations, which operates in the Mercado La Paloma that we all know of in the 9th. Gloria handles the tailoring needs of so many of our community, including me, and she certainly greets every customer with a smile. I think epitomizes the spirit and the promise that immigrants have when they come here and as they become members of our community, the contribution that makes a real rich blessing to our community. So, to Gloria and the others, we just say, "Thank you, thank you, thank you, congratulations, and keep up the good work."
Thank you, Mr. Price, and members, I want to remind you that there was a ceremony earlier, so let's be brief as we move forward. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bannon, and we'll see what happens. It all depends on you, Michael.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, Jeronimo, he's telling me not to talk a lot about you, so I, I won't. I'll say just a brief word. Let me say thank you for bringing this celebration here today. When I was a kid, I grew up listening to the stories of my great-grandparents who came here through Ellis Island from Italy and from Ireland. My great-grandfather, who worked construction and helped build the dam and gave birth to the American dream for his family. I'm struck by how this is a city where we have immigrants like Elon Musk, who comes and brings a fortune here and tries to reinvent Los Angeles and Los Angeles and tries to bring us into space. And we have immigrants here who work very hard every single day in our restaurants and in our hotels, in our homes, trying to make a better life for their families. I want to thank Jeronimo for all the work he does, giving voice to the Oaxacan community in my district. But I want to thank Forward.us and Welcome.us for what they are doing and how they are doing it. Because to me, comprehensive immigration reform is one of the civil rights struggles of our time. And I see an incredible parallel between the way Forward.us and Welcome.us is giving voice to the immigrant community and the way the LGBT community personalized our stories in our civil rights struggle. If we had argued logic, if we had argued fact, if we had argued law, we probably wouldn't have marriage equality in the United States right now. It is when we told our stories and we opened our hearts and revealed ourselves to our families and shared our love that American society's attitudes began to change. And I see this campaign doing the same thing because the heart doesn't ask for documents from anybody. I've never asked a friend to show me his or her documents. And as human faces get added to this issue, human voices get added to this issue, we're going to get closer to comprehensive immigration reform, and I'm looking forward to that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bannon. Mr. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I will be as brief as I possibly can, even though it's going to be difficult because my designee is Miguel Luna. And Miguel, if you wouldn't mind stepping forward, I want everyone to see you and to know who you are. Our founding fathers knew that this was a nation of immigrants, and I'm hoping that this generation of leaders in our United States Capitol will understand that at a more deeper level as well. As Mr. Kocorian mentioned, on my mother's side of the family, we, my ancestors dealt with forced relocation to northeast Oklahoma. On my father's side of the family, they dealt with starvation in Ireland and came over three generations ago, so I am the recipient of immigration from three generations ago. My designee today, Miguel, I met 10 years ago. We've been friends for 10 years. No one represents the immigrant sort of struggle. No one articulates a way forward for illuminating the, the, the social justice piece of immigration rights, in my view, than my dear friend Miguel Luna, and I'm just very proud that you're the honoree today. And founder of Urban Samias, and let me tell you what their mission is. Our overarching goal is to educate underserved and monolingual Spanish-speaking communities about watershed and social justice issues and provide these with community-building skills, thus empowering them to participate in local and citywide planning, as well as playing an active role in city, state, and national policies. Miguel does so much, I can't even describe all that he does, but he is one of the unsung heroes in this movement. And I'm going to mention just a few of the things that he's involved with. Anawak Soccer from 10 years ago, the Community Garden Council, the Neela Collaborative, which is wrapping up their incredible work. He is the ultimate environmentalist. He's a resident of the great CD 13, the 13th District, which is, you know, the melting pot of Los Angeles, and Los Angeles is the melting pot of the United States. Outreach Collaboration, LA River. Miguel will teach you how to kayak in the Los Angeles River. That's how on the ground he is. And he is married to Karen, has a wonderful family, and I'm just proud and honored to stand here with you today, Miguel, and, and thank you, and thank you, Mr. Sadio, and, and all of the organizers of this incredible presentation. Thank you so much.
Mr. Wezar.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, Mrs. Sadio, when you asked us to choose one immigrant from our council district, it was actually very, very difficult, particularly in my district where it is highly foreign-born and a city that's over 40% foreign-born. And we have a lot to be thankful for our immigrants who come to this country and contribute. But as you look at the contributions that they've not only made to this great country but to the city, right now when you look at downtown LA, that portion of my district and all the economic development activity that's happening, it's mostly immigrants who are reinvesting in a downtown Los Angeles that many have forgotten and neglected for decades. And when you look at all the new buildings going up, it is our immigrants who are participating in making Los Angeles once again bloom as a Los Angeles we know it all can be. I myself am an immigrant, came when I was three years old, and like many immigrants who come to this country, we love our home country, but for reasons of work, opportunity, education, we come to this great country. And that's what's great about America, that no matter where you come from in the world, America does provide you those opportunities. And we have one such person here today that we're honoring with Isabel Salas, a wonderful woman who gives of herself unselfishly to the community, who works with LA Voice on a number of immigrant issues and neighborhood issues. They have made people realize that all politics are local. You begin at the grassroots level, even if you're advocating for federal issues such as immigration reform, and in California at the state level to argue for state licenses for the undocumented. Isabel Salas has been recognized as someone who's shown tremendous growth in her advocacy and someone who perhaps didn't see herself as someone who could make change, but she's making change for Boyle Heights, for Los Angeles, and for the immigrant community. Isabel, estamos muy orgullosas de usted. Sabemos que usted da de su corazón para la comunidad. Usted da de su tiempo y saca tiempo de su familia para hacer la comunidad más mejor. Y por eso hoy le damos este reconocimiento. Felicidades.
Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Sadio, for bringing forth this special presentation. I, I too want to rise and acknowledge the many contributions immigrants have made in my district, specifically the Italians or Croatians who immigrated to the Harbor Area for the fishing industry. My family in the mid-60s came from Italy for a better life, for, to make contributions to the fishing industry, whether it was through commercial fishing or also through the canneries. And I'd be remiss if I wouldn't recognize my honoree, Salvador Lara, a dear friend who I had an opportunity to work with as a senior lead officer through the Spanish CPAB at Harbor Area. Salvador has been a champion for improving, his efforts in improving the quality of life in our Wilmington community. He started the Clean Wilmington Program, working with our community-based organizations, seeking dollars for our, our corporate friends in Wilmington to clean the streets and alleys and work hand-in-hand with Gabriela Medina, my, my field deputy in Wilmington, and also through sanitation department, sanitation department, and working with Enrique's office and his entire department. So Salvador, we say thank you, you have a heart of gold, thank you for your contributions to the city, specifically to our beloved Wilmington community, and congratulations.
Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have to acknowledge someone that's very special to me, and if you're familiar with the San Fernando Valley, a lot of times, you know, this wonderful woman doesn't often get recognized, but I have to say a couple of words about my good friend, Chole Alatorre, who never gets acknowledged for the, all the wonderful activism in the San Fernando Valley. She's an amazing trailblazer, whether she be marching with Bert Corona or Cesar Chavez or against Proposition 187 or Proposition 209, or making sure that we're organized to get new, new citizens registered to vote, to make sure that their voices are heard in the political process. That's her. That's Chole Alatorre. La quiero mucho. Que Dios la bendiga y muchas felicidades. And thank you, thank you so much for being such a good friend to me.
Mr. City Attorney, did you want to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Sadio, for bringing this celebration forward. I think it's so poignant to each of us because, as has been said, each of us has such a personal story about the significance of immigration to our families as well as to our city and our country. You know, we all, I think, have, many of us at least, have relatives Ellis Island, names changed, birthdays changed, come to this country. My mom, Boyle Heights, 1930s, speaking Spanish and Russian and Yiddish. English was like a fourth language, in a context where everyone's backgrounds enrich the backgrounds of others. And I have to, I say, as I was standing here, I was thinking about a story that's similar to stories each of us has heard from a child or a grandchild of immigrants. A leader in the city said to me, "My parents immigrated to this country, and when I was in school, one day my mom said to me, 'We didn't sacrifice this much for you not to do your very best in school.'" And it's that instinct, that passion, that makes immigration so important because that drive to overcome what... drive to overcome what one has had to sacrifice, left everything to change the world, that drive is what fuels everything in our society. That energy, that initiative, is what makes America so distinct. And from the standpoint of the City Attorney's Office, I do want to say, immigrants in our community, especially recent immigrants throughout the city, can, because they're new immigrants, be victimized. They can be victimized by criminals, they can be victimized by not getting paid, they can be victimized by people who are trying to help with their, or who purport to be helping with their immigration status, but are instead just trying to take their money. And our office is going to continue to stand with immigrants, so we assure that their rights are vindicated in what can and should be a great city. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Sadio.
Thank you. Thank you. And, Mr. Sadio, I too want to thank you and all of the individuals that are being honored today. And I did, I have to recognize Nikki Legasse from my district, who is just a phenomenal human being and a leader. She's right up to your left. And we have her son with us today and her mother, all the way from Ethiopia. So Nikki was Ethiopia to Buffalo to L.A., and thank you for all you do. And to the rest of you, this country is, this great country is a better country because of your contribution. Mr. Sadio?
Yes, let me introduce the Executive Director of our Office of Immigrant Affairs, Linda Lopez.
Please come forward.
Thank you very much. I want to first of all thank Councilmember Sadio for his leadership in introducing June Heritage Month today in city council chambers. He has been, as many of you know, a true trailblazer, an advocate for immigrants, really an icon for our immigrant community. I want to also thank Welcome.us for their vision in establishing June Immigrant Heritage Month here in the City of Angels. Today, we celebrate all of the contributions that immigrants make to this great city, who come here for a better life and opportunity. We celebrate today the diversity that makes this city the vibrant place that it is. On behalf of Mayor Eric Garcetti, I want to take this opportunity to salute all of the honorees that are behind me today for all of their contributions that they make for this city. Today, we celebrate you and the immigrant experience here in L.A., where more than 40% of our population is foreign-born and come from all corners of the world. All of us have a shared immigrant experience when we think about our ancestors who come to this city for a better life. Our immigrant communities are the beating heart of our city, and we are very proud to be part of this effort with the Mayor's Office. I am honored today to represent Mayor Eric Garcetti as his new Director of Immigrant Affairs, an office that was reestablished to help support our immigrants into the fabric of the city, both socially, economically, politically, and to really help them advance in the city and make, have them be successful in our city. We have also, with the Office of Immigrant Affairs, have been following a lot of the policy issues, both at the local, state, and federal level, and we will continue to advocate on behalf of our immigrants here in the City of L.A. I think we can all agree within a spidic core that when we identify as Angelenos, that we bring to the table the spirit of openness that is unmatched and unwavering to support and welcome our immigrants. Today, we celebrate our immigrants, both in the past, present, and future, and we will continue to celebrate this diversity that makes our city, the City of Angels, rich and inclusive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. President, let me finish by also thanking the mayor. He has been an incredible voice on behalf of immigrants and a real leader. It's amazing that on one day he can ask the president to give us a billion dollars for our river, and yet, without any pause or hesitation, call upon the president to stop the deportations now beyond 2 million deportees. The division and disruption of their family is incredible, and it must be stopped. But it will be stopped, as our colleague, Michael Bonin, said. When people understand that we are all immigrants and that we are all part of this great nation and this great city, I've never been prouder to be an American or an Angeleno than I am today. I thank you. Mr. President, let me give this to the Executive Director.
Go right ahead.
There you go.
Congratulations. Thank you, sir. If you guys could look to the center, we've got a very patient young photographer. So, Mr. Sadio, if you could let her get one more shot? Get your shot. Get your shot, miss. You're welcome. All right, thank you all. Thank you.